You're listening to the We Are Libertarians Network. Learn more at wearelibertarians.com.
Welcome to the Boss Hogg Liberty Podcast. This is episode number 179 of the Central Indiana's favorite podcast. Today, I'm your host Jeremiah Moore. And probably tomorrow too. On my left is my co-host, Mr. Dakota Davis.
Today's episode features Mr. Chris Lamb. Chris is a veteran of the show. He's been on before talking about the Newcastle Career Center, but he is ready to move on to a new chapter of his life and is running for the Newcastle Community Score Corporation School Board. This is a continuation of our candidate series. He is the last one in the school board episodes. We're going to be talking to Chris about a lot of the same things that we asked of the candidates last week. And we are also going to be talking about Delaware County has quite the mess on their hands with their, with their whole election process right now. And make sure you stick around so that you can find out what Chris wants to do as a member of the school board.
This show is about our lives in rural Indiana. We're here to push your boundaries and make you think as individuals. Sometimes we'll provoke you, other times we'll make you laugh, but hopefully you'll always learn something new. Oh Dakota, we just did a Patreon segment where we, we tried this, you and I tried this infinity bottle of bourbon. I'm still working through my shot because it's a sipping, it's a sipping bourbon, we discovered.
Yeah. If you want to know what the antique old Forrester bottle is all about, make sure you join patreon.com/ bosshogliberty. Those are the folks who pay monthly to support the show and make sure that the bills are paid around this place. We do, we do all kinds of things for the folks over there. I'm, I have some, some time coming up where I'll have some free time and we, Audrey made some stickers. If you put in your address on Patreon, if you're one of those tiers and you're going to get a little envelope in the mail with some custom-made stickers that are applicable to the show. So, you know, if you join, if you join right now and you put in your address, then I'll make sure that you get one.
But, but only if you- You can get in just under the wire.
That's right. We also have to thank the folks that support the show at $50 more a month. Those are the folks that, that really, you know, all give some, but these guys give above and beyond.
Top of the, top of the list.
That's right. Those folks are Chris Lamb.
Hey, in the building. Look at that.
We have Christie Avery, Anthony Meyer, and Jonathan Phillips. Big thank you to all those folks.
Absolutely. Much appreciate the, the support at any level, any, any level you're able to kick in, but especially at that $50 and above level, especially as we head into the winter time here, we're about ready to move from air conditioning season into heating season.
Yeah, we have electric heat.
Yeah. It's a, it's comical. This place in the winter time is, is comical. And see, you'll be, you'll be seeing us where Park is and it's going to be feel like David Letterman's studio in here.
The, the brick walls behind us, that's also what it is outside. And it's just solid brick.
It's just solid brick. Yeah. It should make a lovely fire box.
Yeah, it would. We also have T-chip stores. If you don't want to support the show monthly, then you can go and get some merchandise at tchip.com/bh1234. The first three are shirts and they are ranked in order of the least premium to the ultra-premium. And then we also have, number four would be the protect yourself line, which is the masks. We have masks and we have bandoliers or gators, neck gators.
You're literally the only person that says bandoliers.
Yeah, it's a neck gator.
Well, the bandoliers are, gators are also like for your legs. If you're like trudging through swampy waters or snakes.
People that say, people that say bandolier say washing machines. That's gotta be, that's gotta be what it is. I can't, that's right there with somebody saying vaccine.
Well, whenever we went, whenever we flew to Florida on American Airlines, they called them bandoliers.
Well, so your, your subject matter expert is a stewardess on a United Airlines flight or American Airlines flight.
Or whoever wrote the little script memo that she has to read.
That's like, okay, all right, whatever. That's, that's, now I understand where it came from now.
We also have mugs.
Yes.
All right. Jeremiah, you put down an election update.
Yes. So last week, the League Women Voters sent a representative over, helping us out, understanding the options for early voting. And I've been thinking about this, Zach, producer Zach and I got in a little bit of a conversation today about it. And there's this, there is this rush for, for getting to the polls early and early voting. And I've honestly, from in Henry County and in Rush County, the two places I've voted in my life, I've never really felt the need or the urgency to go get my vote in early because I've never had a line. I understand if you're in Indianapolis and the only place you can go early vote is at the city county building in Indianapolis, then you know, you've got the long lines and that's what's going on. And you'll hear stories in Indianapolis or other, you know, maybe Fort Wayne, big areas where polling places won't open and folks kind of get disenfranchised. In my experience, voting since 2000, I guess 2001, 2002, somewhere in that range, 2002 is probably the first election I got to vote in. I've never had, there's never been a major malfunction or a need or concern for me to have to go vote early. So seeing everybody worried about getting absentee ballot and dealing with all this in these communities has got me going, I don't know. I, I, it seems, it seems like you're asking for, for more hassle than just going on election day. It's open for 12 hours and you go and it's the event and that's the day you make your decision. Could turn out that one of Chris's opponents is absolutely horrible and something happens and I voted early. So now I voted for one of them and I go, what the heck? I can't get that back, right? It could happen in the presidential race. It could happen in any of these. And I feel like some of these candidates are in a rush just to get you to vote in their one race. And it's locked in and it's good for them, but as a voter, I want to hold on to my opportunity to vote till, till the last minute.
I voted today, waited about an hour, took my mother-in-law.
You waited an hour there?
Yeah. Yeah. And I was, and they closed one to two for lunch. And we got there and the line was extremely long. And at 12:58, we were the next one to go in. And I thought for sure.
They're gonna be like, sorry.
But they got us in there and, and it was, it was, I'm, you know, I'm concerned. I think, I think there's, well, COVID number one is, I think.
Folks are concerned about having too many people coming through, but I've never, I've never experienced a major crowd, even when I have voted in normal time. Where it's been, you walk in and there's six polling machines and two are being used. I just, I've never felt the, the mass rusher crowd.
At the League of Women Voters last week, I think she said something, they were projecting that voter turnout would be high this year.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Right. And it's entirely possible. I'm glad folks are going. I just don't know. To me, I'm probably going to be one of those voters that either shows up at Ivy Tech when they have their hours, going to the actual courthouse is probably unlikely for me. Or I'm either going to go really convenient and it's going to take me 15 minutes to vote at Ivy Tech, or I'm going to go on election day and it's going to take me five minutes and it's going to be done and set.
At the, you can go to the American Legion, there's typically no line.
Yeah, exactly. I've, you know, I've, and I've stood outside of the polling place, working for candidates or being a candidate myself and looked at the complete lack of lines at the arts, arts park or the, or the American Legion or, you know, any number of these places. It's just usually basic.
But if you are a registered, well, register in quotes, Democrat in Muncie, then you might have to mail in your ballot and vote early. And you didn't have a choice.
So there's a, there's a former employee of the clerks department in Delaware County by the name of Vicky Woodson, who is also a Democrat precinct committee woman. She's no longer employed and was not at this time when this controversy happened. She was not an employee of the county. I think she just was somebody that worked in the office, was incredibly in tune with how to do, how to do this. And she was claiming that she was working on behalf of the party. And was filing absentee ballot requests from a spreadsheet without permission of the voters, ordering ballots for people that didn't actually ask for them. So essentially what she did is she worked off of a list of people like Chris that went in early and early voted or absentee voted at the courthouse or whatever.
Years previous.
In previous cycles and said, well, Chris over here, he's voted absentee in the past. I'll just go ahead and order the absentee ballot form and it's going to be shipped directly to his house. The problem is that if you didn't know that was coming and you had moved or you get your mail differently, or that ballot got lost and you didn't know a ballot was coming, you could show up on election day and you're, you can't cast a ballot on election day because your official ballot's in the mail and you never returned it. So you just got disenfranchised.
Or potentially for some reason, it, you know, pass away, you know?
Yeah. And we have links to all of this information. We put them in the show notes. Patreon members get show notes before the show even starts. Just so that you know where we get all the information. It's not just, this isn't, we aren't a rumor mill.
These are, these are stories that, that are pulled directly from the, the Muncie newspaper, the Star Press, the paper of record in Delaware County.
This mishap got reported to the local election board in Delaware County. And they have actually turned this over to the Secretary of State's office and also gotten the state police involved in the matter.
Correct. They, it was reported to them. This lady has not shown up at either of the election board meetings that they've had, talking about the issue. And the board basically said, we can't administer the election and also investigate the election at the same time. So they said, we're going to stay in our administrative role and we're going to deliver the election, the clerk's offices and the election board of Delaware County. And they basically passed it up the food chain to the state police to look into it. You can request this online and that's what she was doing. And she was literally checking the boxes of saying, I swear that a voter requested this and I helped them do it. And by the way, there's a penalty of jail time and it's, she basically perjured herself on the form.
Well, you know, and this isn't all Vicky's fault because Anna Quirk is the Democrat Party Chair in Delaware County. And she told the Star Press that Vicky Woodson was issued a list of voter information that they believed were people who had requested absentee ballots in the past.
Correct. So it was a miscommunication between the, the county chairperson and this precinct committee person, where she had the spreadsheet and she, her side of the story, Ms. Woodson's side of the story is, is I thought that they were asking me to go ahead and file these because it's on the spreadsheet.
But I mean, the flip side of that, Anna Quirk could just say, no, we were just giving you the information so you could reach out and say.
Right. And then they asked-
Do this if you'd want to, or like-
There were some people that legitimately asked for their ballots to be, to be sent out. So they can't just simply cancel any of them that this lady had filed or any that they received for the county. Because there are some people that put them in on their own. There are some that this lady did. So they just have a complete mess on their hands.
Yeah.
And this is, this is the inverse side. I guess as I'm playing devil's advocate in the, hey, let's encourage everybody to early vote and do all of this extra stuff.
Mail in ballots.
Mail in ballots and just take your mail-in ballot and make your application and do it. This is the side where it's not intentional. I don't, this is not intentional voter fraud. This is somebody that's trying to get people to vote. But there's a very real risk that she's going to accidentally disenfranchise people.
Yep, absolutely. Why wouldn't you be? If a ballot showed up at my house, I would be wanting to-
Like, what the hell is this? Yeah. Yeah. And then you call the clerk's office and-
And they say, uh-
Uh, that's your ballot. And you say, I didn't ask for this.
A representative from the Libertarian Party. I'd be like, who did this? I would be, I would be pretty upset.
Yeah. Well, so we'll see. I, I'm, I, I'm a little old school. Back, back in my day, there were 41 places to vote and you showed up at your polling place. So as a candidate, I knew I was going to capture almost every one of my voters if I stood outside of the polling places of my races. Now it's like a scattered deal where there's a dozen polling places people can go to in Henry County, which is fine. But I may have only needed to cover two of those in a previous, in a school board race like yours. Your voters, Chris, very well may show up in Knightstown, right? You've got a hand, you've got five or six places in Newcastle that are inside of your school corporation. But somebody can pull a ballot in your race if they happen to just decide, hey, I'm going to go vote at the gathering in Louisville today. They can vote down there. So it's, it's, it's just a different, it's a different style. I'm, once again, I'm glad folks are voting, but it's, I don't know that all of the changes are an improvement. Just want, I want people to think critically about it.
I, I think that we're definitely not going to have the results as fast with the number of absentee ballots that are, that are coming in. I think we're hearing, yeah.
I think that's a, that's a major worry as like, especially with the presidential election and how emotional that whole election has been. Basically anything that involves Donald Trump is emotional for people. So I, if, it would just be a total, complete nightmare if, either way, if on election night, Trump looks like he's won totally, and then three days later Biden wins. Or if Biden looks like he wins on election day, and then three days later, we find out Trump wins. And no matter which way it goes, it's going to be a nightmare. And there's going to be people extremely upset. If we thought 2016 was, the aftermath of that election was bad, then I just, I worry about this one.
Ah, I don't care. National, whatever. It's, your life's not going to change. It's nationalist theater, man.
No, it's not the election that matters. It's the people's reaction that are in your backyard.
Right. Everybody, I mean, most people, I think, are going to look at, at, look at the state of Indiana and expect to go to Trump. And if, if Indiana doesn't go Trump, then you're just pretty much going to get, it's going to be a Biden landslide anyway. If Indiana was in play, then it didn't. It's not going to be, don't, don't get at, don't get out of sorts based on the Indiana results.
We went blue for Obama.
Right. But because when, when Obama won Indiana, there wasn't a lot to worry about.
Yeah, that's true.
Right. That's, that's the point. If, if the state of Indiana is in play, then, then the Republicans are probably in for a really long four years. With that, let's, uh, let's talk from the shift over from the national politics, which I think matter in the very, very least, to local politics and a nonpartisan race that I think is actually incredibly important. We're joined by Chris Lamb, running for a, one of the two inside school corporation seats. There were five people in the race. Last week on, on the Boss Hogg program here, we had Forrest Plank and Jackie Hadzle. Chris is with us today. The incumbents, Kim Williamson and Jennifer Blackwell were invited on, but they were unable to, to join us in either of the nights. So we're going to spend our time tonight with Chris. Give us a refresher. I know you've been here before, but a refresher on your bio, your history, how, how folks can remember you and what, what to look for and when they punch the ticket for you.
So, you know, first, I'm supposed to tell Dakota that my cousin Vicky Bell said hi.
Oh, she, Mrs. Bell's your cousin?
Yeah, second cousin by marriage. She's a-
Well, that's sounding more and more distant now.
Yeah. Well, Tony, your husband is, is, is a cousin. Okay. So, but I spent a little time with them Saturday. She said to make sure to tell you hi. And she had some different things to say about Mason, which I can't talk about online.
All the try high people telling stories on each other.
I met my wife in Mrs. Bell's class.
Did you guys talk or was it?
I put governor here.
Oh, great. How did Miss Bell handle it?
Uh, I don't know that she ever knew.
Was she invited to the wedding?
Pretty good at hiding stuff.
She, she knows now.
Yeah, she does know now.
So I'm a Newcastle native. I grew up here, graduated in 1988. After I graduated high school, went to the military and spent over 20 years in the military. We, my wife and I, Rochelle, we have five children and six grandchildren. Our oldest, Ashley, lives in Cambridge. Josh, he works for Nan Polk's brother at Midwest, Midwestern Products. Son Army, Army Sergeant Robbie Lamb, he's stationed in North Carolina. And son Jacob, who's a computer science major at Ball State senior year. And Emily, she's a senior at Newcastle High School this year. So, and all my kids have gone through Newcastle schools. Very good. Yep. So when I returned back to Newcastle from military service, I got a job teaching at the Henry County Youth Center. It was underneath the Career Center, that, that area fell under the Career Center. So I started my teaching career at the Henry County Youth Center, which I loved. Probably one of the best teaching gigs that I had. Spent some time out there, then moved over to the Career Center. Taught for eight years and then became the assistant director and then the director of the Career Center after that. We currently, you know, I'm just, I'm calling myself retired. Some people say unemployed, but I do have a retiree ID card, by the way, from the military. So I can say I'm retired.
Not an AARP card, but a military retirement card.
Yeah, a military retirement card.
There's no gray in that beard. I'm just asking, I'm just asking.
I, I get mail from them all the time and I'm 37. So it's not, I don't know if Dakota's received his first piece of mail from them yet or not, but it's not far off.
Well, my wife got one today. And she turns 50 next month. And so when I read through the, the incentives to be an AARP member, and I just couldn't bring myself to, it just, you know.
Saving 5% at Denny's just isn't worth it to you, is it?
No, 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 no. So.
This is where Guffy would make a joke about how old Zach is.
Yeah, I was waiting for, I was looking in the chat for the comment where he would talk trash.
Producer Zach had his mic muted.
Yeah.
I'd browbeat him.
See, I muted it.
I browbeat him in the-
That's what happens. I forget. I'm like, I'm a little slow to unmute it to talk again. Yeah. I was, I was, I was looking at the chat. It's like, oh, here's where Guffy, wherever he is, he finds a way to hop in the chat and talk trash.
Talk about, talk about how old Zach is. All right. So we interrupted, interrupted Chris. So you're retired.
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, doing some other things locally and I'm on Habitat for Humanity Board. And yeah, yeah. And I started that about, about four months ago. I was asked to, to be on the board and currently I'm on the nominating committee. To, we wanted to get some, some, some younger people involved. You know, the Habitat Board does great things obviously for the community. And we worked with them when I was at the Career Center. We've, we've built about three houses for them. And, but I think I'm the youngest one there.
Really?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. And that's, you know.
Is Jimmy Carter there?
But, uh, he was supposed to speak at their meeting, but pandemic and all, he's not able to travel.
But you know, I'm just, you know, I like to, you know, I had my time off. You know, since I've been graduating high school, I've worked full-time over 30 years and it's, the break's nice.
I can imagine. Yeah. I, I've been working non-stop since, you know, for 21 years now. And I, yeah, I, I thought that a number of times, like, man, it'd be kind of cool. Be kind of cool if, if I just had a little sabbatical.
You only have what, five years left till you're 55, at your points?
Yeah, sure. Habitat for Humanity is doing a house in Spice, in Spice Land right now. It's on the front page of the paper.
Yeah. Yeah. And Caddis, there's a build going to go on there, I believe. That's going to be a penalized build.
Oh, cool.
Yeah, that'll be, so they'll, they'll build the walls and everything offsite and then deliver them.
Bring them in, slap them in.
And which I think is a standard now anyways for a lot of-
Most homes, like TK Homes and places do that.
Goes up faster.
So why did you decide after you, you spent all this time teaching, you went through leadership in the Career Center? What made you decide to go, well, now I'm going to go to leadership of the whole corporation?
I've spent my lifetime in some sort of service, whether it was the military or, or students. And I, I like, I like to make a difference. And the school corporation is really central to a community. You know, we're, we're, we're rolling up future leaders. We're, you know, we're rolling out our, our future employee, employees in our communities. So I think it's, I think it's a pretty vital role to be in. I, I, I like the school corp, the, the, the teachers are just so committed to, to the students. And I think that, you know, we can do some things better. And that's why I decided, you know, I always thought I would do this when I retired. If I stayed until I was like 60 or 65. And then, you know, the opportunity presented itself and it was, it was a good time to run.
How's the response been from former students, the folks in the community? How's, how's the, how's the run been going?
Phenomenal. You know, T-shirts, the kids, the kids love the T-shirts. The yard signs are, I had to, I ran out and had to go back and do another order. I was kind of surprised. I was, I was telling people that, you know, you put one of these yard signs in your yard and your property value goes up about 20, 30%. So.
Well, that's, that's probably why Newcastle's been, the real estate market's been so wild. It's all the yard signs. Everybody thinks all the houses are for sale. It's just, just folks running for office.
And then, well, I was at the, I was at Castle Point today and, and they said they were worried about people egging the window because of my sign. So.
So that much tension in the school board race.
There, well, did the Castle Point people have anybody in the county council race in the window? I know there's a lot of competing barbers in that race. I wasn't sure.
No, there were just three signs, mine and two, the two incumbents for Newcastle Schools. And then, you know, Justin, you know, he didn't, he did, he doesn't need his sign. He's running unopposed. So.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's, well, we don't typically make a habit of bringing people in that are unopposed on the show. It's just like, there's no competition there.
Well, and I think that, you know, with, yeah, there's five of us going for two seats and, you know, so, you know, people want to get involved. And people see there needs to be some changes made. And I think you see that when, you know, with the number of us that are, you know, trying to get on the board. And, you know, this whole process has been, has been fun. It's getting kind of nerve wracking as we get closer to election day. But it, you know, it's a first, this is, this is new to me. You know, I know you've done it. I don't know if you've done it before, but.
Not yet. Dakota has not yet run for office. Lot of, lot of years left, many more cycles. At some point he'll give in and get pissed off and run for something.
But no, this was, no, it's great. It's, it's been fun. Like I said, nerve wracking. We'll see what, how it goes.
So how do you view the role of a school board member? We, we talked about this last week with Jackie and with, with Forrest. And, and they kind of gave the play-by-play of what the, what the statutory side of it is. Is that the role you see of the school board? Kind of a strict constitutionalist in that way? Or do you think that there's other?
No, no, you, we should, you know, we, if you look on the, on the state website, it clearly defines what the role of the, the school board is. And, and, you know, you have hire and evaluate superintendent, you know, you're enforcing, you know, you know, state, state requirements for, for your corporation. You set the vision for your corporation. And I'm thinking, you know, you know, I have a two and a five-year vision for Newcastle Schools. And, you know, that's something going back, you know, in the military, we're always doing short-term, long-term planning. Then when I was at the Career Center, it was, you know, you have a one, one-year, five-year goal where you'd like to, to be heading. So, and that's really just, you know, the main focus that the school board should be, should be worried about. You hire people to take care of those other things that, that sometimes muddy up what's going on.
So when I was a member of the Memorial Park Board, our responsibility was-
That had to stink.
It was, it was, it was quite the job. And I, there's a reason why that board has folks that churn through. It's a very short shelf life.
Right.
Myself included. But the number one role or the, the only role that you had in, in the Memorial Park Board, the only official role was you basically were responsible for the superintendent's contract. That's essentially the case that you have with the, with the Newcastle School Board as well. There's not any other hiring and firing involved, correct? With, with the school, or, or you're responsible for?
Just a superintendent.
Right. Cause I know you'll hear, you hear media accounts of, well, so-and-so teachers run before the school board to get their blessing. Yes or no? That's, at that point, that's just the superintendent introducing folks.
Yeah. You know, you know, obviously the board approves all hirings, but you know, those are recommendations from the superintendent. And, you know, and as a board, if you're, if your job is to evaluate, hire and evaluate superintendent, then that's the guy that you chose to make those decisions. And, you know, you should be backing him or her, you know, when, when they make those recommendations.
If we're looking at it in the form of a, of a football team, the NFL, the school board is essentially in the ownership role. And you've hired a general manager who is, who is the, is the superintendent. And then the superintendent's hiring the coaches who are the teachers, and then you go on down the line.
Yes, exactly.
That's the role that we have here.
Yeah. And I, you know, I don't, you know, I think we've kind of drifted away from that here locally. So.
So following, following the general outline of what we talked about last week, we, we got into what do we think Newcastle does great? What, what's Newcastle excel in? That's the shining star. The areas that you think that the school corporation has covered and needs to celebrate.
You know, obviously the, the Career Center's done outstanding work that, you know, just in the last 10 years. And I think in many ways that can be a model for the school corporation. And, and I'll discuss that a little later on, but, you know, a lot of things the Career Center has done would be, you know, things that I'm happy with, obviously. You know, D-Orch, she's the food service director and, and being able to, and being able to provide free lunch, I think breakfast and lunch now to all students. I think that's, I mean, that's-
Nothing better than a school breakfast either.
It's, it's phenomenal.
I was always a much bigger fan of the school breakfast when I had the chance to have it versus the lunches.
Yeah, yeah. I was too.
You-
You, you know, when I was, when I was an administrator, you, you always talked to students and, you know, and it was, you know, with some of their issues at home. And, you know, whether it was utilities being cut off or, you know, there's no food or, and you're thinking these high school kids, you know, they're a little more resourceful, but we were talking very young kids. That's kind of heartbreaking. But, you know, she had a program where, you know, she, she got the funding and we were feeding, we're feeding kids free now. And she fed them over the summer.
And this isn't just kids on the, on the free lunch.
No, this is everybody now. I think last year it was, there was only, there were only a few schools involved.
Now it's the whole.
And now it's the whole corporation.
Now anybody can turn up and they're good to go.
And yeah, I got a one call message and even the students that are virtual, the, you know, they're giving out. I got a call the other day, you get five days worth of meals. You can go pick them up. So.
You pick them up and then they, then you've got them at home.
Yes.
So you don't have to figure out your transportation of, okay, I'm, I'm seven blocks away from the school and I'm trying to work at, work on my school, work at home and then get myself to school. They just, you get it and pick it up.
You know, we had a couple of elementary schools that are STEM certified. I think that's great. You know, get, get them involved in those things early on rather than just the, you know, the, the traditional academic stuff. Anytime we can do that hands on.
Elementary schools, STEM serves.
Yeah.
What, what goes into that?
They, they have to have programs in place that, you know, for example, robotics, they have to have the curriculum to. In place to, yeah.
It's not just the basic elementary school stuff. They're actually.
Yeah.
I would have been all over that whenever I was a kid.
Yeah, exactly. You know, but we have two elementaries that are STEMs, I think two, that are certified. And obviously we need to get all of them STEM certified. Just to, you know, like I said, to, to reach that, that, that group of students that, that, you know, give them something different.
That need more hands on learning approach. What, so your number one thing, if you could say, if, if you could put a number on it, the, the first thing that you would want to get done to improve the school corporation as a board member?
So we made a commitment, a commitment a few years ago to secure all the, the entrances to the schools. And obviously the middle school is going through that right now with their, the remodel. But, you know, we left Parker Elementary out of that, and I believe Eastwood, they didn't. And, you know, we had the money earmarked and, you know, at the time, and to me that, that's a priority, you know, and especially with the, the number of students in those two schools. But, you know, we, we don't have, for whatever reason, we don't have those secured. That's a priority to me. Because if you know, you know.
So is that, is that a school board decision? We talked about the, the role of what the school board is able to do. Is that a matter of the school board needing to make that a priority? And, and speaking to it?
Yes.
Or is it the school board chose to spend money in a different direction? How does that, how does that happen?
Well, you have to, you know, you have to make a decision that as a, as a board to, to, to say, we're going to put this off. And I'd really like to, you know, I've heard that one of the reasons it was put off was because of the, 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 the cost of material and has gone up. But, you know, we've, we've taken on some other projects that, that here recently, the last year that we probably should have pushed off and, and, you know, completed the, the, those two entrances. You know, Sunnyside, that, that elementary school, you know, I don't know what's going to go on with that. And right now it's, you know, they're using about half the building. And, but it's another one that hasn't, does not have a secure.
Fourth grade right now?
Yeah, yeah. So.
So the other projects that we, I think they talked about it last week on the show, talking about the athletic department, getting new weight room and some of those, those types of things.
I would have, yeah, definitely would have liked to have seen the, the, all the elementary buildings to be secure.
Yeah, that, it seems like a big priority to me too.
Is that, is that the biggest burning issue is the security of the buildings?
No, not at all. I, I think we need to take a look at the healthcare plan that, you know, that's currently being offered. You know, it's a self-funded plan. And two years ago, I didn't, I didn't see any data from last year. School corporation spent over $6 million in, in medical costs. And I don't know that you can really pinpoint what that is going to be year after year after year. So you have to keep that money back. I'd like to see us maybe get away from being self insured and going to a plan.
Where you can offset the risk.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. And.
That's, that's been something we've seen in county government over the course of this show is that county government does the same thing where they have, they self insure. And when you have potentially a pandemic or other things that really drive the costs up, you can't budget in a linear fashion when you self insure. Sometimes you do well, sometimes you don't do as well. And in the good years, you tend to try to spend that money. And then when you have the whopper of a year, the board finds itself in trouble.
I would like to see, you know, like I said, to go, go to a, a, a plan that's, you know, with the shared cost. And, you know, in, in any money saved from that, I would like, you know, we need to definitely invest in our teachers. And I'm, and I'm not necessarily talking about pay raises, talking about professional development, you know, so they can learn the latest and greatest in, in their fields. You know, and then, you know, having sours that are comparable to other school corporations. You know, we, we need to, we need to focus on making this corporation the best choice for the community. And, you know, we have quite a few students that travel, that live in the community that go outside. And we need to fix that.
I think Forrest said last week, there's a net deficit of about 200 kids.
Right. I think it was about 400 that go out and 200 that come in. And, yeah, that's, you know, that was done a number of years ago, you know, used to when I grew up, if you lived here, that's the school you went to.
Right.
And.
The inverse of that is that it's, folks have the conversation of that your, the school has to compete, right?
Yes.
The school has to find a way to make itself better so that the teachers and parents choose to participate in that school corporation.
Yeah. And our, you know, our competition are the county schools. And, you know, when I was at the Christian or I worked extremely well with county schools and each of them, they excel in, in some area. But, you know, I, like I said, I'd like to, there's 400 and some kids that are going outside of Newcastle. I would like to, you know.
So are there, are there too many school corporations in this community in Henry County? Is that, I mean, because it sounds like on some, on one hand, you play with each other where.
Right.
Newcastle sets the school calendar, Knights Town Tribe, Blue River and Channadoa all follow Newcastle.
Right.
You have kids that are coming to the Career Center constantly. We have kids that theoretically could go to six different school corporations if they live, seven different school corporations if they live in Henry County. Because I think the kids in, in Liberty Township potentially go to Hagerstown. You have kids in Stony Creek that go to, is it Union? I don't even know. You can't get there from here. So I never know where those guys go to school.
But also have a private school in Henry County.
And, and a private school as well. But, you know, we, we've heard politicians talk in the past of maybe some school corporation consolidation should happen.
I, you know, I don't want to take that, that necessarily take that, you know, people, a lot of times people move to the country because they want that life and they want their, 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 their kids to grow up in those schools. And so I don't, no, I don't think there's too many schools. If a school can stay, you know, stay in the black and.
I mean, it, it seems like it's, we talked, whenever the red for Ed issue was going on, one of the big things was everyone kept talking about student to teacher ratio, classroom sizes. And I think that, I mean, you would be shooting yourself in the foot by consolidating some of the schools.
Yeah.
Because then that just gets worse. And then you have a teacher whose pay probably didn't go up, but now they have more heads to handle. So, yeah, I say keep the small county schools.
Are schools able to ask why somebody left the district?
Yeah. Yeah. They've, they can pull that data and from, there's a, it's called five star or five, something like that. I had access to it before. And when I was on the committee for the middle school remodel. And you can, yeah, you can get all that information and, and make those calls and.
And you say, I like programming better, or I didn't like a teacher, or I, I wanted, you know, my, we grew up in this school corporation. So that's one we want to go to.
But what you're seeing though, is, is that some of those, a lot of the score corporations are, are just to stay black or staying or, or cutting programming. And if you don't have a comprehensive, you know, list of programs or to, to offer to students, then you're, you know, I think that's not a good thing either.
Blue River cut football, guys.
I don't think they've ever.
One of the greatest shirts. Yeah, they had a shirt undefeated since 1963 or something like that. I've always wanted to get one of those shirts.
It's hilarious.
So, you know, we need to, to me, that's, you know, if you ask Chris Lamb as a, as a school board candidate, you know, what do you, I think we need to focus on those students that are, that are leaving. And try to get them back in.
All right. So the nation, Indiana included, and our local area has been really impacted by the current pandemic that's been going on, COVID-19. Do you think that it's been handled well by the school corporation? Or are there things you would like to see different?
I, I think it was, it was very everybody. I mean, you didn't know, how could you paint, really plan for this? I mean, you know, we're, we're planning for, you know, disasters and, and the things like that, you know, if it happens you know, in school, but, you know, we don't, we've never planned for a pandemic. And I think, you know, I, I think they handled it as, as well as, as any other school. You know, when, you know, closing down, going to e-learning, while that's not a good thing for a lot of students, and especially those at the Career Center, I mean, you lose that, the hands on. And, but, and then, you know, wanting a kindergarten or first grader sitting, you know, that's, this is not going to happen. Or it's not going to be effective. So I, I think, you know, I think they did okay. Coming back, I, you know, I would have liked to maybe seen like a, a green and a white day. So we could, you know, we.
That's where you get 50% capacity?
Yeah, yeah. I would like to see that. And I, I don't know if it was talked about or not, but I, I would have, you know, that's something I would have pushed.
During, during the end of the spring semester.
Right. Yeah. Coming back to this fall.
Such a difficult position to be in as a board member because you, I mean, you're thinking of the kids and then you also have to think like, well, if we do, if we don't open up, then what, what are these kids going to be staying at home with?
Yeah.
Do both of their parents work? Are both of them essential workers?
Yeah.
Is one of them a waitress? And now they're hurting for food because the, it's, her job's been closed? Like, so it's, I don't envy, I don't envy any of the people that were making that decision.
No, and I'm curious to see what happens, you know, second semester, if they, if all the kids come back. You know, I don't, I don't know if they're going to continue with the virtual after this first semester, but I'm curious to see, you know.
Is that a, is that a superintendent decision?
Superintendent and the board, yeah.
Okay.
So everything is, is approval, is approved by the board. You know, obviously those conversations need to happen with the other superintendents in, in the county. You know, because we have some shared services, Career Center, Special Services, Special Ed. So, you know, I, I just curious to see what's going to happen.
So you get into that conversation, all of a sudden you have six or seven school superintendents involved. And potentially 40 or 50 school board members that all want to have a voice.
Yeah.
How do, do you communicate? Do you, is there a responsibility of the superintendents to communicate and come back to their boards? Or how does that, how does that part work?
And they, they meet. I know they at least meet every month, the superintendents do. And it just, they like to get together and bounce ideas off each other and, you know.
Would we find them like at Snedeker's or what kind of a place would we find the superintendent meeting at?
I, I don't know.
Scooters.
The local Elks forum.
Elks, yeah.
The Scooters is closed down right now.
What?
They had some COVID cases pop up.
Oh, no.
Yep.
Uh oh.
Uh oh.
Okay.
This is tragic news. Granted, I haven't been in over a year.
The owner, the COVID.
But to go back to your question, you know, and, you know, the, I, I think we need to, like I said, look at healthcare and, and, and see if we can save some money there and, and, and put that back into, you know, you know, training our teachers and. You know, the, one of the, one of the incumbents had posted that, you know, talking about, you know, during the 10, their tenure, you know, teacher raises and you need to have some conversations with some teachers because, you know, even though there was an increase, you know, there was also a huge increase in, in employee healthcare and.
In their costs. So the, the take home, yeah, didn't, didn't.
No. So 26 pays that, you know, family plan increased about a hundred bucks. So right off the bat, that's about $2,600. And then you doubled the, the, the out of pocket, it's over $5,000. And so that, you know, for Newcastle, that $3,000 that we gave teachers, those that are on the family plan actually lost money.
I think that was one big thing that our friend Stephen Vititode was talking about whenever he was leaving the Newcastle Career Center. That was one of the things he cited was like, we got a raise, but not really.
I'm never getting, yeah, I'm never going to make more money here and have to do this.
No, not like the, the used, you know, used to. As a teacher, you knew where you're going to start and you knew where you're going to end in 20 years. You know, you know where you would be and, and it was comfortable, I think. And now I, you know, with the top teachers in the top end making over $60,000, I don't know that teachers now, you know, with the current system will make that in the, in the 20 years. And with currently how we're doing it. And, you know, that's, in the locally, that wasn't decided. That obviously was decided at the state level. On, you know, on teacher pay back when Dr. Tony Bennett was, was the superintendent of public instruction. And, but anyway, so we're, you know, we're, we're paying for that now, you know, if you can't, if you can't get good talent in here and keep, you know, teachers here. I, I don't know that you're going to offer a, a great product and, you know, to the community.
So you've transitioned us very well into red for Ed.
Oh, I remember that. Rob Kendall.
When that, when that came up in January and February and, and teachers stormed the State House. Did you have a red T-shirt on? What were your feelings?
I, you didn't see the red Newcastle Career Center T-shirt, the red for Ed? We did those? Oh, no, strong. I definitely supported that effort. And I was, you know, I was, I was a teacher. And, you know, I, I was in there when I, I was getting, and let me tell you, a step increase for a teacher wasn't like thousands of dollars every, you know, I'd, some years I would get $600, some years I'd get $900. But I knew I would always get something. And the end goal was I was going to max out at some point. But, you know, and, you know, you mentioned that, and I don't know if you'd seen that press release today that, you know, that the board that was put together to decide or, or come up with suggestions on teacher pay in the state of Indiana.
No.
They, they came out and said, you know, we're not going to release the recommendations until after the election. Why?
You have to, you have to vote for the bill before you know what's in it.
Right, right. So, yeah, look, I, I had read that headline today and that, that struck me as odd. But, so, yeah, we definitely need, you know, you, you know, our teachers, some of them took a, a pay decrease. And then had this, you know, huge out of pocket expense, you know, for a family health plan that, you know, if, if, you know, if their kids got sick or their spouse got sick, if their spouse was fortunate enough to stay on the plan. I don't know that, you know, that they did a spouse will carve out. And I don't know if that's pretty common in, in the workplace nowadays.
Where you have, your spouse has to take insurance if it's offered?
Yeah. And.
That's pretty common in the.
Is it? You know, the military wasn't. And, but, yeah, I don't, you know, but if you're trying, if you're having, you know, your employees and you, you want to have this kind of this family vibe, you know, you don't, you don't cut spouses out, you know, personally. But we need to figure out a way to, you know, to also make it affordable. But I don't think we should be trying to solve the financial problems on the backs of the, of the staff. And, and, you know, I keep saying teachers, but, you know, teachers got a raise, but what about the support staff? And they took those same healthcare increases without a pay increase.
Imagine a school without a janitor.
Yeah, yeah. And, and it's, it's, it's hard to imagine, you know, you know, you, they're already, you know, in, in positions that, I don't want to say they pay extremely well, but, you know, they, they can get by. And, but when you, when you increase their healthcare costs by thousands of dollars in the year, that's.
It becomes untenable and folks have to find something else to do.
Yep.
And then the school corporation has an even bigger problem.
Yep, exactly.
Is that like, the next question was a plan for increasing teacher wages. And I've heard you talk a lot about, you know, we need to encourage and provide professional development for teachers. And I've heard you talk a lot about, you know, we need to, uh, encourage and provide professional development for teachers, being a big deal. We gave them a raise, but their raise was nothing and some people even lost money because it just went right into their health insurance.
Yep.
So fixing that would automatically put more money back in teachers' pockets?
It, yeah, kid.
Are you, so after those plans, is there still in your head a need for increasing the teacher wages?
Well, it's, you know, if, if we're the, you know, Newcastle used to be the highest paid corporate, everybody wanted to come here. If you, you know, twenty years ago, if you, if you had a position open, you'd get a stack of applications. Cause this was a good place to be. And, um, and now we, we make, we get, we have an opening and.
You're saying in relation to other county schools or in the state? Like people, you'd be attracting people from Shelbyville or Greenfield or far, places far off.
Well, they were, um, from surrounding schools, from, you know, those that were graduating, uh, fresh from college.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, you know, they're, you know, Ball State used to, to graduate a lot of, you know, a lot of students with, with degrees in, in education. They're, they don't anymore. And I think, yeah, Ball State did away with their fax program. And, um, again, you know.
That's where you take a piece of paper and type a phone number into a machine and then you put it in.
Yeah, right. Yeah. F A C S.
Oh, okay. What is, what is a fax?
Family and fax, family and consumer sciences.
Okay.
And, uh, you know, home ec.
Okay.
And, but, you know, I'm, you know, we say, but it's, it's life skills and, um, but, and we've cut our, you know, we, when I was in high school, we had six head, six tech ed teachers. Now we have one at the high school, teaching, uh, two classes and, um, those classes, we, you know, we can get high reimbursement from the state, you know.
Tech ed, define that for me.
Technical edge, that's your, that's intro to construction, intro to manufacturing.
Aside from the career center?
Yes.
These are.
These are the, these would feed into the career center.
Right.
And, uh, for example, uh, uh, manufacturing one, um, is like an intro class. And for every student that you put in manufacturing one, you get six hundred eighty dollars back from the state per credit. So, you know, if you put, if you have two hundred students in there, take that times six hundred eighty bucks, that's, you know, that offsets the cost of that teacher. Same with fax, those are reimbursable classes. Uh, um, but, you know, we're, we've, we've, we're cutting those down. And, you know, people can say, well, the students aren't interested. Well, I, I think, you know, that's the, the count, that's up to the counselors to really guide those students. I think we probably put too many kids in an AP class. You know, we put, we dump kids in AP classes.
Put them in AP so that they're ready for college.
Right.
Quote unquote, but there may not necessarily be the place that they should be.
But if they don't pass the AP exam, they get nothing, they're, they don't get college credit, you know, if they don't score well enough on the AP exam.
I was put into an AP class and it was way too advanced for me.
Right.
At the time. And I failed the AP exam and I was like, this whole thing was a waste of an entire year.
Yep, yep. And, um, and, you know, AP classes have its, they have their place and, uh, but it's not for everybody. Now dual credit, uh, you know, if it, if it's students in a dual credit class, then they're guaranteed to get that credit as long as they get a C or better in that class, that college credit. And, uh, you know, we did a lot of that at the career center.
That's where you find yourself just about having an associate's degree or having one.
Yeah, yeah. We had many students that were just, you know, just a few classes shy and, you know, the goal was never to get an associate's degree, I don't think, I don't think, because that's hard to do in a rural school. And Newcastle's the largest school in this community or in this county, but it's still considered a rural school by standard Indianapolis standard or, uh, you know, South Bend or Neveensville. Um, it's, I think it's hard to get, because you have to get those qualified teachers in order to credential to offer the dual credit classes. And that goes back to, you know, my, my, my thought on, you know, spending money on staff professional development to get, you know, so we can get them credential to do dual credits, which makes us more attractive to, you know, parents and, and students, uh, to, to want to come here, I think.
So we've wasted all this time talking about educating kids. We haven't talked at all about testing the kids so that you guys get credit.
Yeah.
How's that going?
So, you know, the board really doesn't have, you know, we, we don't make those decisions. We just have to enforce, you know, what the state throws at us. You know, those, the, we need to be having conversations with, you know, Tom Saunders and, um, Senator Lysing, Leasing.
Lysing, yep.
About that and.
Mike Gaskell, our new state senator.
Yes.
For the north.
Yeah, and.
The Northlands.
You know, you ask, if you, I don't know where they get this, because if you ask, if you ask most people, that, they don't want their, their child trained to take a test. And, um, and some students just can't take a test. I mean, just to be honest.
Dakota just admitted to failing one. I would never admit that.
It was, listen, I, it was principles of engineering and I was a sophomore, it was a senior level class and I have no idea of why in the world I was ever put in that class.
And you said, I can't even spell cantilever.
There was like, we were doing graphing on calculators, it was advanced trigonometry. I hadn't even taken a geometry class. But.
How did your guidance counselor get you in that class then?
Because I did the, my freshman year, I did, I weaseled my way into introduction to engineering and design. And these were, these were classes that were done, uh, by Project Lead the Way, which was a Purdue University, uh, type program. And I excelled at the design. Like I, I could think of things really well and I could like design them really well.
Hands-on.
In CAD, yeah.
Yeah.
And then the second year was all the math of like, of engineering the things and I just totally, I just, that was bunk for me.
Did Darryl Kiesling teach that?
No, it was, uh, oh crap, I can't remember his name, uh, Steve something?
Oh, uh.
Steever.
No, a Dungen.
So, yeah, he's the, uh.
Steve Dungen.
He's over at Whitewater now.
Yeah. He left after my sophomore year. They, they probably said, you had someone fail.
You're out. How'd Dakota Davis fail one of your classes? He's one of our A students. You're out, Steve.
But, you know, going back, you know, those conversations need to attack, and, and let me tell you, Tom is, is, uh, is, he is such an advocate for, for public education.
Yeah, and Tom's great.
And, um, you know, and we don't really have any competent, we don't have charter schools here and, but, you know, with, with the voucher system and, and with the state has, and, and, you know, really those really benefit just a few counties in, in, in the state, um, those, the larger metropolitan areas.
Hamilton County.
Yeah, and, uh, but by doing those, the, the, that, that type of system, it pulls away from our funding. Because it, it's, it's all, you know, they allocate money from, uh, the, the earmark for education. And then they pull that piece out, you know, the vouchers, well, you're pulling away from us because, um, you know, our students won't, you, aren't going to use, our parents aren't going to use those here. You may have some, but overall it, it doesn't.
Because you don't have the, the opportunity to take kids to a school every day.
Yeah, but that.
Function.
But that money that is put into vouchers that support those few counties in the state of Indiana pulls away from the rural communities. That, that money could be coming to us, you know, I guess, you know, if you want to have, if, you know, if.
Is the, let me ask a question this way. A voucher student, are they worth as much money in a voucher as they are to the public, public, to public school? Or is it because they can add, you can get additional because they took two or three extra classes, you can multiply it out? Um, if, if a kid's worth five thousand dollars in a voucher, they're worth five thousand dollars in revenue to Newcastle.
No, it's near seven thousand.
Whatever, pick the number. But it's seven thousand, it's the same as if you had lost one to Shenandoah.
If you look at it that way, yes.
Okay.
So, um, I'm looking at the, the overall education budget in state of Indiana and, you know, that money that they pulled aside for vouchers, that means that's less money we're going to give back per student.
Okay.
And it only benefits certain counties and, um.
Do homeschool, do, do parents that homeschool their kids, do they see any of that money?
Get no credit whatsoever.
Nothing.
Homeschoolers essentially pay taxes for, for public education, they don't receive the benefit from it.
I could understand the voucher system if you were going to include homeschool kids. And, you know, if you're truly going to say have the money follow the kids, then why doesn't the money actually follow the kid? Because now you're just like playing games.
Well, and that was discussed and I, so, you know, if the, the, the parent got the money and then decided homeschool's not something that I can really tackle with my student, then the student goes back to the public school.
School has to take the kid.
Then the school has to take the kid, which is, you know, that's, overall, that's our job to educate the kids. But we don't get the funding. So.
At least you won't for that six-month period. You'll, on account day, you'll get it back.
Yes.
But the other objection that homeschool families have always had is that right now, all they have to do is they keep attendance, right?
They're worried that if all of a sudden they're getting paid, then they'll have.
You get the carrot, you get that giant stick beating you over the back.
Right.
All right, so how do you think the school board interacts with the state? Is it, is, do you feel like it's the, you know, things running downhill and the school board just has to take it kind of a?
Definitely. And, um, you know, we have Nan Polk, she does a, you know, she's running unopposed on a, on a, I think it's an open. But, uh, she does a great job of, of talking with legislators and, um, and that's really what we should be doing as school board members. Is, uh, talking to legislators through the, uh, you know, the Indiana School Board Association. And the state of Indiana, that's, you know, that's your advocate, your group to advocate for, you know, school, school corporations. That's, you know, that's where you need to, you know, I think a lot of one, you know, me having one conversation with, you know, with legislature is, I mean, it's going to only go so far, but, you know, when you, when you have that, you have a group doing it, I, it's, I think you're listened to then.
Very good. We will start to wrap up the conversation this evening, uh, go around the room, work into final thoughts, see what we've got. Producer Zach over in the, uh, in the corner, have you got anything that we've forgotten?
No, not anything you guys have forgotten. Um, shout out always to Ellen Kay. I know Kate's been doing the harvesting.
They have caramel apples Saturday again.
I saw that. So he's got the bean crop in, he's getting ready to transition to corn, I believe. Um, one thing to, to bounce back on, something that, uh, was brought up earlier. I'll give a shout to the food service, because I know my kids were in school and all through the pandemic thing, when they were not in school, um, they had a insane organizational system for, you came, you went by on Wednesdays and they gave you five breakfasts, five lunches and had it all organized and just tell them how many kids you had and they drop it off and just throw it in the trunk of your car or whatever. And it was incredible to see him do that. And then when they had to move it all to the fieldhouse, I think for part of the summer, they were doing the whole town and they would have a line, they would have the whole fieldhouse parking lot stacked up with cars and they would just get everybody through real quick. So I know they were working real hard to get all that stuff done. So they probably don't get a shout out enough for all the work that they did keeping kids fed, because that's probably the only way that some kids were eating over the summer.
Exactly. And, and to do that during, you know, the pandemic is, I mean, that's, you know, logistically was probably, was a nightmare just to do it with, you know, if there was no pandemic. But, uh, you know, to, to keep the social distancing and they're, you know, they, like I said, D'Ork and her staff were phenomenal. And, uh, that's definitely.
And they didn't get a raise. But the health insurance went up. All right. More work to be done.
Yep.
All right, Mr. Lamb, how, uh, how do people follow you? How do they get involved? How do they ask more questions if they have them?
So, um, the, uh, I'm on also, all, all platforms of social media. I'm not on TikTok, I mean, Snapchat, but.
I don't know, I feel like you could do well with the TikTok.
I probably could not.
I think you could do like some sort of an equate knockoff of Zach Galifianakis over there with that beard you got going nowadays.
Well, I had a friend text me, said, the, he said, the camera adds ten pounds to your beard. And then someone else.
I, I think you could host between two ferns.
Yeah.
Henry County.
I watched the, the Hillary Clinton episode again last night. It's, it's hilarious.
Zach Galifianakis is a true treasure.
Yeah.
Anyway, I've derailed your final thoughts again.
No, uh, so, yeah, Chris Lamb for school board, I'm on Facebook and I'm on, uh, Instagram and Twitter, um, and my email address is there. You can, uh, uh, you know, always reach out to me through email. Um, but, uh, also, um, you know, I, I get around town quite a, driving around with my, my Dodge pickup with my Chris Lamb for school board. Metal magnetic signs and I always keep T-shirts and signs in the truck. So if, you know, if I'm somewhere and you want one, don't, don't be afraid to approach me.
You got the hookup.
That's right.
We appreciate you very much for coming on and joining us.
Well, I appreciate you having me and it's, uh, it's, it's an important race this year.
Yep. It's definitely become the most interesting race, I think, of all of the local, local races. The, the school board one is, it's got my attention. So I'm excited to, uh, excited to have, uh, extended the invitation to all of the candidates, but three of the five have taken a step on it. We're glad, uh, glad to go through it.
So I think the last time I was here, most viewed?
Yeah. Oh, it was massive.
And is it still most viewed?
Yep, still, still P one. You got a lot to live up to.
Well, I, I, then I, I didn't share it. When I did the, the show last time.
No, you weren't even, you weren't, you weren't most viewed on video.
It was the, the downloads, the audio downloads.
Oh, wow.
Video on audio only. People like your voice, I don't know.
Oh, so do I get a, is there, do I get any compensation for that?
Oh, we can talk off air.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I've been a supporter for over a year too and you're.
It's, it's amazing.
Jeremiah keeps me updated on the numbers. I don't.
Do you have those plaques like they have for YouTube where you get like the, the gold and the platinum plaques?
Yeah.
So many subscribers.
And I have not received my sticker yet. I mean.
Oh, Dakota.
Just, just saying.
Going to have to bust into the sticker supply.
You say it's on me, but.
I've got stickers over here.
You're one, you're a half of this podcast too.
Order fulfillment has been the Dakota Davis, uh, side of the, uh, of the yoke. All right.
I would display, I did, I would display proudly.
We will, we'll get that remedied. Dakota, you got final thoughts for me?
I do. Uh, my wife's still making cups, tumblers. She's been making a bunch lately. She's actually, she's making like four more for Chris, for producer Chris Guffey. So the, the cup orders keep flowing, but she also has, uh, she's been making keychains. Like she just started making keychains made out of epoxy and she can customize those the same way that she does the cups and they're cheaper than the cups. But I think they're pretty cool. So I wanted to plug that. And then, um, I was going to say something else about Zach, but I can't remember. Oh, just to thank you. Zach has been filling in for me. He's been filling in for Chris Guffey.
Somebody's going to have to start filling in for Zach though.
Yeah.
You gotta get some full attendance around here because poor Zach's, uh, he's been here too much.
The other week, um, it was like, we were having a show going on, no, it was last week. We were having the, the show happening and, but Audrey had, uh, her mom reached out and like, she wanted to do something. I'd been working late every other day in the week, so I kind of felt bad by being like, no, you have to stay home again with the baby. And so I was just, I reached out to Zach and Zach's like, oh, my wife just got out of surgery like two days ago. I was like, well.
You're muted. I was sitting in the hospital as he messaged me.
And he's like, I can, I can ask her though. And I was like.
She's laying in the hospital bed, let me check.
I was like, don't do that.
She's still under anesthesia. I mean, when, when she wakes up, we'll, we'll see.
Totally fine. And then, uh, it's, I'm like, it's fine, whatever. So I just, I still came. And then I'm sitting out in the parking lot and Zach pulls up right beside me and I'm like, what are you doing? And he's like filling in for Chris. Okay.
It's a.
He said, he said April told me that it was okay and I didn't even have to ask her.
I didn't bring it back up. She said, yeah, if you want to go do it, you can go do it. I'm like, well, I'll see. And then, then I got messaged again about being Guffy.
It all worked out. All right. I think we're back to Thursday of next week. Don't know who the guest is, don't know what we're doing, but we'll be back Thursday of next week. Uh, we're doing this on Tuesday because if you guys, uh, think back to, uh, previous episodes, you've heard from cousin Rick, the beekeeper. Well, cousin Rick is getting married and I'm, uh, I'm a groomsman, so I've got a, I gotta go do a bachelor party. It's going to be weird because cousin Rick came to my bachelor party with Dakota. He attended Dakota's bachelor party, even though they hadn't met each other yet. I got him down to Nashville, so we got to do a bachelor party for cousin Rick.
A, a man I've never met from Illinois drove to Nashville for a guy he's never met's bachelor party.
Nashville, Tennessee.
Yes.
Tennessee.
Wow.
Yeah.
I am.
We had a lot of fun.
Sometimes I can be a convincing son of a bitch.
And he locked himself out of the room that night.
The second night he did spend the night on the roof, uh, very much hangover-esque.
Of a parking garage.
Of the parking garage.
Wow.
So we'll see what happens this week. I may have stories next week. Well, who knows? Tomorrow night is the, uh, Henry County 4H Awards Dinner, which means we're wrapping up twenty twenty, which means it's time to, uh, to get going again for twenty twenty-one. So we've already had a couple of 4H Junior Leader meetings. If you're, uh, if your kids are, uh, around the, uh, around the 4H age, third, age, third grade through 12th grade, get them signed up. Uh, awesome program. Get to work with me eventually. Check it out. We appreciate you all for, uh, joining us this week. We will see you next.
Thank you for listening to the Boss Hogg of Liberty, which is part of the We Are Libertarians network. I am Chris Spengel and I am the founder of this network. And I invite you to listen to all of our shows, which you can find at wearelibertarians.com or by searching for these in your pod catcher. The flagship show is the We Are Libertarians podcast, where we apply libertarian principles to current events. The Brian Nichols Show is a conversation amongst Republicans, Democrats, Libertarians, independents, as they talk about what is happening in the news and. And we have many other podcasts like The Chris Spangle Show, Upward, The Cost, Raw Audio Politics, Miranda's World, and Tad Talk, which is quite a ride. So check all of these out. Go to weirlibertarians.com and you can check out all of our great podcasts. Thanks for listening.
Thank you for listening to the We Are Libertarians Network. Get our other shows at weirlibertarians.com.